Grinding up and rebuilding the base and the, and River Road was a two and a half million dollar project from the greenhouse on around. Now they'd end up with a solid, excellent surfaced road that could last 25 years.
On around to where?
All the way down to Jackson. Because it, it connects up with the other leg of River. So that would take.
That's big change. It's nothing.
Well, it, it is, but to a small city like Needles.
We have tons of money.
Two percent I haven't found, but, but you know, and fortunately, we have an insurance generating money to us. And we've spent almost a little over 10 million dollars in streaming. But this is a road that other than the road past the dog park in Duke Watkins, may be the most efficient road in town. But I understand the problems these people have brought to me. And I'll give every analysis that can be made, but I will go ahead and authorize the engineering of a solution. Because we'll have to do it anyway before we spend the month. To construct, you have to.
How much? From the center of that road to the south? Cause you can't do it on the north side of it.
Cause you got the lake.
So how far do, does the city have that road?
Well, we own the golf course. So on the.
Does that run all the way down to where he's wanting to do this project?
Pull it up, Patrick, would you please? It, it runs. On the south side, it runs all the way to. We own all the way to Mr. Pierce's property.
What are you?
So you could do it.
We can't see.
Well, okay, so here's River Road. Here's the golf course. And on the south side from from, from River Locks project.
K Street.
The golf maintenance yard and then the golf course all the way to the butts Mr. Pierce's. Better really hear Barbara. Yeah. What's it?
The smelter goes from the triangle.
Yeah.
And the original river. Across that road. Behind the green.
Right.
The dyke started at that.
Yes, that's right.
Started around the.
Maintenance, right, the maintenance yard.
So, yeah, so all that from the maintenance yard all the way to Mr. Pierce's property on the south side of the road or on the right side as you're driving to the boat launch. The city owns all of them now. But be aware because at the toe of, so here's the, the road. Here's the dyke on the south side. At the toe of the dyke is a main water transmission line. So it would have to be replaced or relocated. Because, because that's.
Gasoline.
Yeah, and the water line, that transmission line comes from well 15, which is as you come off the bridge, it's to the right. And that line then runs to the golf course maintenance yard. And then from there is pumped up the hill in the main transmission. So it, it would. It would add costs, but it, I mean, engineering, I mean, I've, I've seen the pyramid, so I know. And I've seen Grand Hooly Dan saying.
Anything can be done. All it takes is money.
If it wasn't for money. Yeah, and, and in order to.
Split the difference.
Yep, just lower it. In order to do it. In order to do it, we need to find out whether that dyke still serves a flood control purpose in the eyes of.
Never happened.
And the question's going to come up about who owns that dyke? Because I know on the, the little artificial meniscus that four of engineers build out into the river, which created first beach, second beach, the corps or the Bureau of Reclamation on soles. But as to the ownership of the dyke, I've never been asked that question.
So here's something interesting. When we brought a surveyor down to survey that. Now, I really wanted to establish our corner. Property pins for that property are in the very middle of Dyke Road. I can go show you the property pins.
Wow.
That property owns to the middle of River Road and, and the city of Needles has a old school, he brought up, showed me easement. You go through this.
I thought you were going to bring up the fact that half of that green.
Yeah, it is on your property.
That's why I was asking about.
Well, he's trying to keep out of my name.
It's not on you.
That's why I was asking about taking up to his properties. He took the golf course. Road might help your golf game.
It's really bad.
Okay.
All right. Before we get too far.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Um, are there any other comments the commissioners would like to make? Discussion, any deliberation?
I'm going to get home and I'll call you and you know, I'll forget.
I'm, I, I have some comments, I guess. First of all, I love the looks of this project and I love the fact that there, there is potential being sought after here in, in our town. I also am really glad to see people from the public that showed up. We ought, after all, this is a democracy and it works on participation. And we as commissioners, I feel have an obligation to respond to what we hear and make judgments based on public's concerns. And I am all for further development. And we need the tax revenue. We need the, the things that Mr. Pierce can bring to the city we need. But I also think there's needs to be things put in place first. And being a public safety guy for 32 years, I really take to heart the concerns about the, the emergency exit out the back end that leads to nowhere. And I would really hate to see some catastrophic thing happen, God forbid. And all those people have no place to go out that sandy road and under the underpass to Smith Road. That's not feasible. So I'm just really concerned about, about things being built before we're ready. And I know we need the money. I mean, we don't need it. We, it's nice. It's nice that our town is being built. There are some amazing ideas. I really think this road issue needs to be resolved. And emergency access needs to be resolved before a project like this gets done. So this is a really tough one. I love the idea. I really love the idea and I want it to be there.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission.
Of course.
Sorry I didn't cover this. As Mrs. McConnell pointed out when she was up here, the road past the ball, the, the Little League fields. River Road again, horrible condition, but the road which we refer to as BNSF Road.
Yes.
We had put dump trucks full of
Yes.
asphalt grindings on that in, in years past. I got a, I received a dust complaint the other day and a video. And went out and looked at it and I did not realize that that road, as Mrs. McConnell pointed out, is all dirt road right now. And, and, and that, and that, and that sand is very friable or very easily airborne. So I have asked our public works department to begin the process of probably putting 100 loads of asphalt grindings down. And we can build a six to nine inch deep gravel road there. And then we would come next year and put slurry on top of that. And I was told by Johnny Phillips, when he was still active, that if you build a six to nine inch base of asphalt grindings that, and you put a slurry seal over the top of it every other year, within six years, you'll have a solid road base and then you could put asphalt. So we're starting to address get improving the access of what is what down there is really dirt road and it's, it's, it's softer. I mean, it's not.
I know. I see the cloud every day.
Yeah, you do.
Um, okay, so, so that, that might help some of my concern in that if you, um, if you have to go out that southernmost exit, that gate that you can open with the bumper of your car, then you take that, then you take that road up to the tracks. You can then turn right. Is that correct?
And it'll come out on K?
And it'll come out, oh, it'll come out on, um, at the trust, we're at the trust yard. And then you can take that over to the baseball field and go through there. Okay. So that, yeah, so that, that's good to know. So that is helpful. Okay.
Could that ever be the second road during tourist season for boating or anything that could alleviate the traffic on?
Yes. Yes. Yes, it could. But we have a hard time teaching people not to run into the bridge. So if someone pulling a boat, they could act, turn left there at the underpass and connect on this rebuilt road that I'm, that I talked about.
Right.
Called BNSF Road. That, that could act as a second access, not only to evacuate, but to access. And there is room, as was mentioned, of a second road that paralleled the railroad tracks, but a lot of that is BNSF property and they're they're tough.
Well, my concerns about that emergency exit then have been alleviated some. I'm, I'm still have some great concern about the road on the dyke. And whether or not we we build a project that uses that road.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, is there a way to get the city to do the road study options ASAP? And come back to this in a month or so? So we don't have to let go of this project?
Yeah, I really don't want to let go of this.
Because we, I think we all agree that it's a needed and wanted project, but we have safety concerns. And those are our number one priorities. So you may be able to come up with solutions in, let's say, 30 days since the developing wasn't going to be starting until 2024.
You can still ask for.
Well, see if we can get River Road prioritized.
I could still.
Ask for a vote because it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Right. I don't know, but I'm willing to vote. Well, that's your option, but we all.
Today is the 19th.
I agree. It's just the access with the roads, something else to be thinking about then.
Does that have to go to the utility board? No, 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 no.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Finished? Oh, uh, no, I mean, I under, the River Road is always, you know, that's always been a narrow road and every summer it's like that. I don't see that changing in the near future at all. I don't think there's going to be money to do it, but it is obviously a concern. At the same time, the city's spending thousands and thousands of dollars looking for developers and to improve the city and their tax base. We've got a guy here. We didn't go out and find him. He came to us. Is willing to spend a lot of money to really improve that area. The people living down there, your properties are going to be worth a lot more money with this development. And I just don't see a downside from it at all. And why we would hold up a development and someone that's willing to spend and make a beautiful property down there. Uh, we're a resort town. That's what we, you know, strive for. So this guy is doing what we, what we promote. And so I just, I mean, I think it'd be just nonsense to hold this off, but that's my opinion.
Thank you, Linda. One thing you could do is identify the concern and strongly encourage the council to resolve it. So it would keep the project moving forward. And then, because that's about the time the project will get to the city council.
Okay.
And then that gives me time to do some engineering analysis, but you will discharge your duties by pointing out that this, based on testimony and observation experience, is a serious problem that needs to be addressed.
And, and for the people that are in attendance tonight, too.
The council.
Council meeting and tell the council too, like roads are prioritized, you know, save, save money, get these projects done that are well needed for the development. So we, we do need public input on it.
I'm being coached by Patrick.
Yes.
So he needs to.
Yeah, it's a special use permit. So tonight's the night. This would be the opportunity for you to vote on this. Call the question, vote for it, yes or no, or prolong it for an engineer study, but this will not go in front of council unless it's someone opposes the project or wants it, the decision that you make overturn. So if you make the decision to approve the project and somebody wants to fight it, then they can say, they can, they can take it to council. If you say no, then the developer can take this to council. So that's the only way this is going to get to council. If there's an opposition to your decision that is made tonight.
But you said or prolong it for an engineering.
Prolong it, yes.
Would that be, would that be agreeable with the applicant if for us, if we?
That would be agreeable if I could ask a question.
Sure, of course.
So I totally understand the safety. I understand the, the problem with River Room. The one thing I probably don't understand is what kind of oh my Lord, emergency could make that park have to take their RVs and run for their lives?
Fire.
Fire?
I was there. Fire.
Okay. I know, I live in, I live in Southern Oregon.
We couldn't get out.
We live with fire. I, I look at the project and the only red I would think fire wise that would affect that property would be pretty shores across the street if it come to fire.
No, the ones to the east of your project.
Which would be what?
That's where the fire was.
At shores, Jack Smith. From that stuff. It started way down.
Along.
The water.
Surrounded by the. So what stopped the fire?
Water and the wind finally.
Stopped the fire coming up the river.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, so that's a fuel break. So the fuel break stops the fire over there. Kind of stops the fire over here at the golf course. Because there's no fuel pour to burn. So the only real threat to that property is the property itself, which is not going to be a fire threat once we're done with.
The sparks are going there, turning through the air.
You still gotta, you still gotta have fuel to burn. Anyway, I'm not gonna, yeah. I guess my question is, and I would think if we got into a giant emergency.
You would probably have a bigger threat, the way it is right now, if you had a homeless person camping down there and started a fire with brush that's there.
The threat, the biggest threat that is in that area right now, spreading, burning shores and all that, is that property itself right there.
Duly noted.
Because it's that tinderbox. I just, I noted a year ago and I was very nervous about fire at that point. We did it during the letter. It is.
Are you, what are you talking, east of your property?
Burning.
East of your property?
The what?
East, are you talking about east of your property right now?
Our property itself.
Your property.
Was a, is the biggest threat in your guys' area for fire is that 16 acres.
Well, the fire that we had when I lived there in Verde Shores, where we were all trapped, um, didn't come from your property. It came from east of there. It was spreading and it spread to the shores of Verde Shore.
Stop because of the water. That was the fuel break. That was what, that was what basically stopped it. I would think stopped fire. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you hear that?
Well, I'm on the, on the spot. We, it seems to me the planning commission has two obvious choices. Either to continue this and allow me to come back and engineering report on. And I got to tell you, I'm going to focus on getting BNSF Road as the second access.
Good.
Because that's the quickest, easiest, cheapest fix. I, I have the tailings all over the place in storage. So it's not, there's no cost to go get them. It's just transporting and grading and compact.
Right.
Council could, you know, delay and give me time to come back to you, which delays the gentleman's approval.
Right.
Or because you'll still have to make vote yes or no at that point. Or even though this is a special use at which the, the planning commission has final say, you can refer this to the city council. With, and then the time's going to be the same, but it will queue it up in front of the council. And it's just whether you want to see that report before you vote or not. And it's just the comfort level that you have about, is this going to be addressed? And I'm, I'm telling you, I, I will get this addressed.
I would say would uh, we just vote on it and Rick follows through with his deal on the road. Because that's not a big expense on that road and that, that should probably be done, whether his project
Right.
does anything to begin with.
And it's going to be. And that's, that's why it, that's why I brought it up, Mr. Chairman, was because that is already in motion.
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion to, um, prolong our decision tonight, whether yea or nay for the special use.
I think the chairman didn't ask for the motion.
I, I don't know that that's appropriate at the, at this point.
Okay. That, that was, that's what we were just talking.
We were, but I think what needs to happen now is we bring it up to a vote. If it doesn't pass, then we can go down your, that route.
After we vote on it?
You're just going to ask for a motion to approve the resolution? That's it.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution number 04192023 PC approving a special use permit.
So you're assuming that he just called for a motion. So you, that's what you're doing?
That's where we're at and yes.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All in favor of? Aye.
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 May I? So that would be a yes vote on the special use permit. Is that correct?
Yes.
No.
Okay, so it was, uh, six to one.
Five to one.
Five to one. We're missing.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's my fourth grade math. But I'm still going to do the work that I, yes, described earlier.
Because the road is going to be an issue regardless of this project or not.
But we want the project to go through, but we want that road to be addressed.
Okay, so I would like to, point of order, Mr. Chairman, I would like to go over the findings that we are mandated to either find or not find. On through A through F by law, we're supposed to make findings.
Don't.
And I would, I would like to, we're supposed to enunciate these on the record. We have to make these findings. And I would like to, um, first review why I voted no. So I will go over the findings first. If I may.
Well.
In order to vote yes, you're supposed to enunciate each finding.
Isn't that part of the whole resolution?
In receiving approval, staff report and receiving approval for a special use permit, NCC section 97 identifies findings that need to be met as follows. Our city attorney has advised us over and over again that we need to enunciate these findings when we make these motions. And I would like to do so.
Mr. Okay, you're, you're challenging me in parliamentary order that I'm not familiar with. So.
Let me, let me try and.
We approve the findings with the motion?
That's what I thought. Let's.
You're supposed to announce.
Allow me to, allow me to, um, refer to Mr. Daniels.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Barbara and Linda are both right. And that is, um, the motions should say if the maker of the motion in the second agree, that it is based upon the findings that are in the staff report. But Barbara is right in the sense, well, that if you do that, then you're accepting the findings as were written in the board of meetings. If Barbara wants to elaborate on some of the findings in terms of an explanation about why the commission voted the way it did. It's choosing type of these.
Okay. All right.
Permission granted.
Carry on.
On the findings, and this is primarily also just for the applicant's sake and for the record, okay? The first finding we're required to find is that the requested permit is within its jurisdiction according to the table of permissible uses. And I make that finding. Item two B, the application is complete as far as I can tell. Item two B, the application is complete, as far as I can tell it is. We covered with uh, tonight's meeting all the points that I thought that might, it might be incomplete. So as far as I'm concerned, the application is complete, including our meeting tonight. Number C three, the use is consistent with the general plan. The finding itself does not state that, that finding itself says something to the effect that the use is generally consistent. And I didn't bring that up with staff, but I'm not going to linger on that now. Um, so I'm going to find, make the finding that the use is consistent with the general plan. Number D four, the use will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located. Even though it's an RV park, it's not a mobile home park, it's not a residential regular housing like the other developments are, it's not like the River Looks Park. But I believe that it is in harmony with all those parks, okay? Even though I do, well, I do believe that the um
Evening, guys.
Be careful. Be under a hundred.
Um.
You look real good.
So whatever I was going to say about D, consider it finished, I forgot the tail end of that. Um, F, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. I make that finding, it is finding number five FE that I cannot make. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety. And I believe that's true, the way it stands right now. It will, it will endanger primarily because of the volume of people that we are hoping you will get. There will be hundreds more people at, in that density that's already a dense area. And I'm concerned about the safety, I'm concerned about the keyhole effect. Um, I lived there, I lived through one of those fires and a lot of people couldn't make it across the river. We didn't have, the fire happened so fast that it was, you were, you were trapped, okay? We could not get out, those of us that lived in Verde Shores. Colorado River is blocked from Rio Buena Vista and they could not open it to let us through there, okay? The people that hit the golf course were likely from Rio Buena Vista, I don't know. So um, there is a true safety hazard there as far as I'm concerned. And it's a danger to the public health and safety. Coincidentally, but I don't believe in coincidences, in the first part of our agenda tonight was the planning commission um, issue on us being planning commissioners and what our foremost duties are. And all the way through here, it says we are to address the public health and safety over everything else, okay? So after reading all of the pages, we had twenty-three pages here on what planning commissioners are supposed to do. And that is one of our primary goals here, is to protect the public and I, and the health and safety. So that is why I'm deciding, I almost said, go for it, if we could have gotten an engineering study done, and you do have some time, I don't know what city council will do. But um, I guess it doesn't go to city council because we approved it, okay? But I wanted you to know that I do not believe that this is safe right now.
Maybe I can help this problem along. Just quickly, you guys talked about one of your options maybe with dividing down the golf course. I've got some ground there that is between the power lines and River Road. That as I pointed out, it's kind of wasteful land.
Yeah.
If in the future we'd like to discuss it, I'd probably be willing to donate that ground to the city.
It's already been approved as far as we're concerned, so.
I, I like the idea of safety, if you guys do, if I can help, I'll be there to help.
Please do.
And thank you and good luck on your project.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. I believe. I believe we are at board requests. Are no regular items.
Yes, uh, Matt, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Members of the commission, I really just have one thing to re, well, two things to report. One, the bridge is open. Going across there.
Oh, it is.
Both lanes. As Sean reported to me earlier this afternoon.
Awesome.
It was strike. Uh, as you recall, it was a concrete deck bridge. It is still a concrete deck bridge. Uh, which means that the life of that concrete is going to be there for basically a. One of the problems on the, the bridge experience was when it was built some sixty years ago, the pillars sunk a little bit, which created that.
Well, yeah.
But uh, in order to get the final deck and to get closed or to get opened by today, which was their target, um, they went back and ground down the asphalt to match the bridge, so I'm not promising there's no bump, but I know there won't be a bump like there was. And I've been assured that it'll be smooth. That, but I have not driven it myself, I can't provide firsthand testimony.
I'll report.
Good news.
Yeah, okay. Um, and I forgot the second name, so.
The underpass.
I, I, the underpass. Um, and I, and I, I say this with full knowledge that I've reported this before and it's not been put. That is, all of the paperwork, BNSF has been stopped.
A miracle.
Doing a job walk with their engineer from San Bernardino. Is it tomorrow, Patrick?
Yes. No, well, well, okay, yeah, they're working on doing the job walk that's not scheduled yet. They're, they're working on the scheduling.
So, so.
End of it.
All of, all of Fort Worth is done. So now the only thing that needs to be done is the engineer in charge of overseeing our contractor. Our contractor and the city will walk the project, make sure that we all understand. So. Ten days?
Yeah, really. And, yeah, and once the, once the engineer is good with, with it, our, our contractor can begin.
We awarded that contract in twenty nineteen, November twenty nineteen.
Right, is he still working? Is he, I heard you say he's, he's former, is Phillips still working?
Yeah.
His son's.
Johnny, Johnny's.
Okay, oh, the son, okay.
But Wade is.
Got that. Okay. Okay.
We're ready to go.
Awesome.
Our contractor and then idling.
So, yeah.
Okay, but we're ready.
Couple of weeks.
And both those, good news. Uh, one final thing is the, the city, meaning you and the city council and all the people that work on the city's receiving a, an award from the American Planning Association for our work on the general plan. In terms of an exemplary project in a small community. That and the state has designated us a pro housing community, which is statewide recognition that only twenty-two cities have out of four hundred. But our policy framework is in support and is pro housing.
Even though we don't have any house.
Well, we're gonna have, we're gonna have, here's, here's one, but uh, Mr. West's project. Uh, we met, we're meeting with the, the person who owns the lots up by the rodeo grounds. Uh, he, he's moving to Mendstromberg. He is ready now to report on it.
The vape line or the little project?
Yeah, the, the sixty-five lots.
Good.
The one on the west side.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, sorry. I said, I said.
I just wanted to acknowledge that the presence of the mayor.
Oh, yes.
A little.
Thank you.
That, that the mayor didn't bring us donuts.
A motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
During the meeting. Thanks for having over tonight.
Yeah.
What? Dave, what?
But uh, but we're still reporting. This is not all. Slavery boss.
Oh, yeah, well, you're, by law, you're supposed to state your findings every time you make a motion or any time, anytime you do.